Good afternoon, everyone. I call to order today's meeting of the Boston City Council. My name is Ruth Lee Luiz-Jean and I am the president of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Ray.
Here.
Counselor Laletta.
Here.
Counselor Durkin.
Here.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Luiz-Jean.
Here.
Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Peppin. Counselor Santana. Counselor Weber.
Here.
And Counselor Worrell.
Here.
A quorum, Ms. Burke.
Thank you. Thank you. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, I ask for all councils and guests to please rise for the invocation. After the invocation, please remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. It is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy Pastor Edsel Cadet invited by Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, would you like to come up to the podium with your guest?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm honored to introduce Pastor Edsel Cadet of the Berea Seventh-day Adventist Church. It's a church that my grandfather went to. Some of you may recognize Pastor Cadet from when he was here last year as we honor the Berea Food Pantry for serving more than 400 people every two weeks. We will not hold his New York roots against him, but they are strong. He grew up in Queens and graduated from Stony Brook. And these days, Pastor Cadet has the Berea Boston thriving with his ministry trips in the community, Sabbath School, and the food pantry. And as you can imagine, the pastor is also a motivational speaker, therapist, and author. I'm proud to invite him up here to lead us in prayer today. Pastor Cadet.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell, for the invitation and the opportunity to share today, and also to President Lejeune, as well as the esteemed members of this council, as we pray together to begin these proceedings. To the God of this universe, as we gather in this esteemed place, Boston City Hall, we come before you with hearts filled with gratitude and reverence. We acknowledge your sovereignty over all creation, and we seek your guidance as we come together in unity regardless of our diverse backgrounds and beliefs. We recognize that within this great city, there is a tapestry of cultures, faiths, and traditions woven together in your infinite wisdom. You have created us all with unique identities, yet you call us to live in harmony and in understanding with one another. We pray for the leaders and the decision-makers of this city, that they may be guided by your wisdom and compassion in all their endeavors. Grant them the strength and courage to serve the people of Boston with integrity and justice, seeking the common good above all else. May your peace, which surpasses all understanding, reign in the halls of this city. Let it be a beacon of hope and light for all who enter its doors, regardless of their backgrounds or beliefs. May it be a place where justice is pursued, where compassion is extended, and where love abounds. We lift up all those who call Boston home irrespective of their faith or creed. May they find solace in your presence and strength in times of trial. Bless this city with prosperity, unity, and harmony, that it may be a shining example of your love to the world. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Now say, recite the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again, Pastor Cadet, for that wonderful prayer and setting for this meeting. We will now have a brief presentation from Counselor Worrell honoring Colonel Christopher Shaw, and then a presentation from myself honoring Lillian O'Neill. Want to point out that this is our first meeting of Black History Month, so Happy Black History Month, everyone! Yes, snaps, snaps! And I just want to thank my colleagues who were at the reception to honor both Lillian and Colonel for all they do. I want to say a thank you to David Henke, who is here from the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs. David, yep, thank you for being here and is also with the 54th Regiment Company Volunteer Infantry. Always see you in Hyde Park. We have former city council president Larry DeCara in the house, so welcome, Larry. You are always welcome here. And I also want to thank, I know that we have some Black veterans in the house that I wanted to shout out. Meredith Tuitt, Haywood Fennell, Bruce Bickerstaff, and I also know that I see Jamada in the house too, a dear friend of Lillian's. So thank you all for being here. I also know that there are others who have served, including Counselor Flynn. So all those who've served, if you could please stand so that we can acknowledge you. We thank you for your service. Counselor Worrell, would you like to come up? Oh, and lastly, we also have Elliot Potuck, who's here from the Office of Veteran Services. Commissioner Santiago was at another Veterans event and couldn't make it, so just wanted to say thank you to Elliot for being here.
I'm delighted to introduce everyone to Colonel Christopher Shaw, who is a 20-year Marine veteran. Highlights of his career include serving as the legal advisor of the Secretary of the Navy and General Counsel to the 27,000-person Marine unit based in Japan. In both of these roles, Chris assisted broad stakeholders, all the military services, diplomats and international partners, and responded to requests from the president, Congress, senior military leaders, the media, foreign government, and the American people. The son of Jamaican immigrants, Colonel Shaw grew up in Boston and currently resides in Northern Virginia. Chris is the proud product of Boston Public Schools, having graduated from Boston Latin School before later graduating from the U.S. Naval Academy. He first served as an officer in the infantry and deployed on Navy shift to the Pacific and Mediterranean. After his first tour, he led recruited efforts in the Boston area and selected 120 college students to serve as Marine pilots, ground officers, and lawyers. The Marine Corps then chose Chris for the Marine Law Program. He attended Boston College Law School and subsequently the University of San Diego to obtain an LLM in International Law. Initially as a lawyer, Chris prosecuted crimes on Camp Pedleton. He also served as a supervisory trial counsel, established since training for new counsel in creating processes to expedite trials and discharges for low-level offenders. During this period, Chris deployed with his trial team to Iraq, where he led prosecutions and provided legal advice to deployed Marine commanders. Starting in 2009, Chris led teams of lawyers providing general counsel services to senior Marine generals and civilian leaders. His substantive practice areas include military criminal law, treaty interpretation, law of armed conflict rules of engagement, government ethics, regulatory compliance, and investigations. Chris has used a collaborative approach on advising teams of lawyers on sexual assault, prosecution in the military, high-visibility fatal aircraft crashes, and led the team that created the Marine Corps 2021 Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Framework. Chris recently moved to the private sector, where he's focused on institutional governance, investigations, and compliance. This is one of our own, Boston-bred, Colonel Christopher Shaw.
Good afternoon. This is quite an honor for me. I'm a Boston guy, Celtic fan, Patriot fan, and I've supported our teams wherever we go. I've had an opportunity to see the world through the Marine Corps, but that really started with my Boston roots. My parents, they came from Jamaica. Larry DeCara, who invested in me as a young man, and Latin School, which, you know, your Latin School has folks translating the Gallic Wars and certainly translating that Latin into English and understanding the geopolitics of the Roman Empire helped me understand the geopolitics of the United States. So this is quite an honor, and I can tell you that, how do I say it? Boston is a place of immigrants, and whether you're a first-generation immigrant or you're a Mayflower immigrant, we come together to make the city better, and we help the country and the world to be better. So again, this is quite an honor. Really appreciate it. You know, this is the first time I'm in uniform since I retired. I actually did 33 years in the Marine Corps, and it's truly been wonderful. Just a couple, just want to recognize a number of other folks. We have Bill Senate, who was your city attorney for a long time, who also is a retired colonel. We have Jim Valley, who's a retired brigadier general. What's important about these folks to me has been that as I'm transitioning from 33 years in the military and coming into the civilian world, they have kind of opened their arms and helped me through the process, which has been very important. To my other lawyer friends from Boston College Law School, thank you for helping me in law school, but also helping me in the transition. And then to my family, again, really appreciate it. There's a couple weeks ago, met a, how do I say it? My mom, who came to this country not knowing what to expect. I am, how do I say it? With all the tools that I've been given by Boston and my family and my friends, I could not imagine going to another country right now and trying to figure it out. So I am particularly grateful for all the love, all the support, all the insights, and just the decision to come to the United States, the decision to name me Christopher, because that was your anchor to the United States, much like Christopher Columbus was the anchor of the Western world to the United States, America. But thank you for all that you've done and that you continue to do, and I still consider Boston home because my mom is at my home in Boston, Mattapan. So thank you.
Can we have the Shaw family come up for a photo?
Can my colleagues also join me for the photo?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a few years.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, separate five. Rock.
Thank you, moms.
Appreciate you.
Thank you again, Counselor Shaw. I mean, Counselor Worrell. And thank you again, Colonel Shaw, for your service and for being here with your family. Graduated just a few years before me at Latin School, so good to see you in the house. Our next honoree is going to be Lillian O'Neill, and this one brings me tremendous joy. When I first met Lillian, the encouragement she gave me, the love she showed me was overwhelming, and it went right to the center of my heart. And so I thank you, Lillian. You also never know what will happen at a grocery store, shopping for food. I run into her daughter Fay, and I run into Lillian, and we talked about making this happen. And so Fay, thank you for wanting to honor your mother this way. Thank you for connecting with me so that we could make it happen. So just so that, if you don't know Lillian, she was honored last year, actually, at the Black Veterans Appreciation Brunch by the Office of Veteran Services here by Commissioner Santiago for our outstanding community work. Today, I have the honor as a president of the Boston City Council to declare August 29th Lillian's birthday, Lillian O'Neill Day in the city of Boston. Lillian, you are truly one of Boston's most treasured daughters. You were born on August 29th, 1939, in this city and raised by your parents, Olive and Arthur Morgan. After a long and distinguished career with the United States Postal Service, you began to write prose and poetry as a tool to keep alive the stories of those who have sacrificed and served, ensuring that the contributions of our veterans and Black heroes in particular are remembered and celebrated. Lillian O'Neill's life exemplifies the essence of community service, resilience, advocacy, and the importance of preserving history through the arts. Her dedication is deeply rooted in the inspirational legacy of her father, Arthur Morgan, who was possibly one of the first Black Sea Scouts embarking on significant voyages abroad aboard the ship, the Seth Parker, that contributes to the rich tapestry of Black heritage. It's a recognition of Lillian's role in not just preserving the legacy of Black history through your poetry, your veteran advocacy, and your community service, but also in inspiring future generations to remember and honor the depths of Black heritage. I also wanted to take a moment to highlight her strongest and fiercest supporter, May. Her daughter, and I would like to invite you up, May and Lillian, to say a few words. Thank you.
I just want to say one thing.
I want you to come up here, Lillian. Before we do, Lillian, I'm going to present this to you, and it says, official resolution presented by Council President Ruth Luiz-Jean. Be it resolved that the Boston City Council declare August 29th, 2024, the day of Lillian O'Neill, in recognition of a lifetime of remarkable achievements as a devoted daughter, loving mother, inspired poet, veteran advocate, and fervent supporter of the city of Boston. And be it further resolved that the Boston City Council extends its best wishes for continued success, that this resolution be duly signed by the president of the city council and attested to in a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk of the city of Boston. Thank you, Lillian.
Did you want to say a few words?
Yeah, it's so important. It's so important that I also recognize the Ghost Island Mothers. Virginia Hurley asked me to write a poem about a forgotten war, and the postmaster asked me to. And so therefore, on her day, she read my poem, and I will make sure you get a copy of it. The Ghost Island Mothers are so important because they go through so much, and they manage to pull people together in a time of need, in a time of want, and we have to reach out and recognize them and give them their salute. I support this. I support the 54th Regiment, the 72, and when they built that park, I was instrumental in helping to put that park up. I gave my voice, I gave my opinion, and we did it. I have 10 children. I have 10 children.
10 children.
I have six girls and four boys, and this is one of my girls here, Melissa. And I also have Rosalie, and I don't know how many others come, but I am honored, and I have to tell you, I have written a poem called "qualities of a Woman," and I plan on putting that out.
I just want to say about my mom, thank you for everyone being here, and thank you so much, Melissa. I really appreciate this, our family does. I mean, I watch her over the years do what she does, and I'm so inspired by her, just watching her. It touches my heart so much, and just the idea of not having her, it makes me afraid. I don't want to ever lose her, and I want to celebrate her now while she's here. You know, my mother, my dear mother, I love you so much.
I love you too.
Do my colleagues and the family and supporters of Lillian O'Neill come up for a photo? Thank you.
Who is my son?
I don't think he wants to get home.
Y'all know she don't like cameras. Go behind your grandmother, babe.
Grandma, she's hally. I also wrote a 9/11 poem, too. That was important.
Thank you.
Now, onto the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of January 31st, 2024. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the minutes of the last meeting are approved. We are now on to communications from her honor, the mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0280?
Docket number 0280, message in order for your approval, an appropriation order in the amount of $1,260,000 for the Cemetery Division of the Parks and Recreation Department and the Trust Office of the Treasury Department, to be funded from the Cemetery Trust Fund established under Chapter 13 of the Acts of 1961.
Thank you. Docket number 0280 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0281?
Docket number 0281, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $100,000 in the form of a grant for the EEC Mental Health earmark, awarded by the Mass Early Education and Child Care Department, to be administered by the Office of Early Childhood. The grant will fund and support mental health training for early childhood educators.
Thank you. Docket number 0281 will be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0282?
Docket number 0282, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $92,735.50 in the form of a grant for the Federal Fiscal Year 23 Emergency Management Performance Grant, awarded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, passed through the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, to be administered by the Office of Emergency Management. The grant will fund the enhancement of operational capacity at the Boston Emergency Operations Center and to promote the professional development of OEM staff.
Thank you. Docket number 0282, oh, 0282 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. The chair recognizes Counselor Worrell.
Thank you, Madam President. Vice Chair, the vice chair of the committee seeking suspending passes.
This grant for the federal FY23 Emergency Management Performance Grant. This grant holds potential in bolstering the operational capacity of the Boston Emergency Operations Center and advancing the professional development of our Office of Emergency Management staff. Given the low dollar amount and the critical nature of our emergency preparedness and response, I urge the suspension and passage of this grant. Thank you.
The chair moves for reconsideration of the docket for suspension and pass for docket number 0282. Counselor Flynn?
Point of order, Madam Chair. On that docket, which I do support, with many councilors not present...
Thank you, Madam Chair. On this document, which I support, and many councilors not present, especially newer city councils as it relates to the Office of Emergency Management, I would like to learn more about this grant. I know my colleagues that are brand-new as well would like to learn more about this grant, so I would like to ask if we could have a formal hearing.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. The chair has moved for, have you moved for suspension and pass?
I've moved for suspension.
The chair has moved for suspension and pass. Are you objecting to that?
Yes, I'm objecting.
Counselor Flynn is objecting? of Emergency Management. The grant will fund the enhancement of operational capacity at the Boston Emergency Operations Center and to promote the professional development of OEM staff.
Thank you. Docket number 0282, oh, 0282 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. The Chair recognizes Counselor Aron.
Thank you, Madam President. As Vice Chair, the Vice Chair of the Committee on Public Safety seeking suspending and passage of this grant for the federal FY23 Emergency Management Performance Grant. This grant holds potential in bolstering the operational capacity of the Boston Emergency Operations Center in advancing the professional development of our Office of Emergency Management staff. Given the low dollar amount and the critical nature of our emergency preparedness and response, I urge the suspension and passage of this grant. Thank you.
The Chair moves to reconsideration of the docket for suspension and pass for docket number 0282. Counselor Flynn?
Point of order, Madam Chair. On that docket, which I do support, with many councilors not present...
Thank you, Madam Chair. On this document, which I support, and many councilors not present, especially newer city councils as it relates to the Office of Emergency Management, I would like to learn more about this grant. I know my colleagues that are brand new as well would like to learn more about this grant, so I would like to ask if we could have a formal hearing.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. The Chair has moved for, have you moved for suspension and pass?
I've moved for suspension.
The Chair has moved for suspension and pass. Are you objecting to that?
Yes, I'm objecting.
Counselor Flynn is objecting to that suspension and pass. Docket number 0282 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, for docket number 0280, I just want to make sure, was that referred to the Committee on Ways and Means?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0283?
Docket number 0283, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $65,000 in the form of a grant for the Fiscal Year 23 Community Mitigation, awarded by the Massachusetts Gaming Commission, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund investigations that are coordinated between Boston Police Department Human Trafficking Unit and other law enforcement entities.
The Chair recognizes Vice Chair on the Committee on Public Safety, Counselor Aron.
Thank you, Madam President. As Vice Chair of the Committee on Public Safety, I'm asking again for suspension and passage of this grant. This grant for FY23 is for community mitigation awarded by the Massachusetts Gaming Commission. It will bolster efforts in combating human trafficking. These funds will directly support coordinated investigations led by the Boston Police Department, Human Trafficking Unit, and other law enforcement agencies. This is a low dollar amount, so I'm asking for suspension and passage of this low dollar amount grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Aron. The Vice Chair of the Committee on Public Safety, with the consent of the Chair, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0283.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Thank you, Counselor Flynn.
You can just, do you have a, would you like, it's not a point of order, but you have a, you object?
Yeah, I object. I do want my city coun, I do want the city councilors that are not present to learn about these grants. They need to understand how important these grants are. We're not educating our council colleagues by passing a grant without our colleagues knowing about it, what impact it has on the residents. It's an opportunity for them to learn about how city government operates, and that's important to me. And I'm going to object because I think they should be in this discussion in learning about these critical grants. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Flynn objects in suspension and passage. I would just like to note that for these dollar amounts, we routinely, I'm only in my second term as a city councillor, but last term routinely suspended and passed these grants when Counselor Flaherty was the Chair of the Committee. But we have an objection, and so we will not be voting on it. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0284? Oh, the, yep. The docket number 0283 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number 0284?
Docket number 0284, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $60,000 in the form of a grant for the Youth Engagement and Advancement, awarded by Boston Children's Hospital, to be administered by the Office of Youth Engagement and Advancement. The grant will fund a development series with ongoing workshops for youth workers to learn skills and strategies to become more effective in their positions. The funds will be used towards the Mayor's Youth Summit.
Thank you. Docket number 0284 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0285?
Docket number 0285, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend a donation of three certified comfort dogs valued at $8,400, donated by the Dane Dogs Labradors LLC, to be administered by the Boston Police Department. The purpose of the donation is to support the Bureau of Field Services of the Boston Police Department, and by adding three comfort dogs to their department.
Thank you. Okay, okay. Thank you. Docket number 0285 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0284?
Docket number 0284, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $60,000 in the form of a grant for the Youth Engagement and Advancement, awarded by Boston Children's Hospital, to be administered by the Office of Youth Engagement and Advancement. The grant will fund a development series with ongoing workshops for youth workers to learn skills and strategies to become more effective in their positions. The funds will be used towards the Mayor's Youth Summit.
Thank you. Docket number 0284 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0285?
Docket number 0285, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend a donation of three certified comfort dogs, valued at $8,400, donated by the Dane Dogs Labradors LLC, to be administered by the Boston Police Department. The purpose of the donation is to support the Bureau of Field Services of the Boston Police Department, and by adding three comfort dogs to their department.
Thank you. Okay, okay. Thank you. Docket number 0285 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0286. Oh, please read dockets number 0286 and 0287.
Docket number 20286, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Sandro Galia as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health for the term expiring January 26, 2026. And docket number 0287, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Elsie Tavares as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health for a term expiring on January 26, 2026.
Thank you. Dockets number 0286 and 0287 will be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0288?
Docket number 0288, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Sanam Kamia as a member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a term expiring December 30th, 2027.
Thank you. Docket number 0288 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0289, 0290, and 0291 together?
Docket number 0289, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Nigel Jacobs to the Boston Art Commission for a term expiring December 20th, 2028. Docket number 0290, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of James Mason to the Boston Art Commission for a term expiring December 20th, 2028. And docket number 0291, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Apigale Norman to the Boston Art Commission for a term expiring on December 20th, 2028.
Thank you. Docket number 0289, 0290, and 0291 will be referred to the Committee on Arts, Culture, Entertainment, Tourism, and Special Events. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0292 to 0295?
Docket number 0292, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Craig Douglas as a member of the Bay Village Historic District Commission for a term expiring April 1st, 2026. Docket number 0293, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Laura Shea as a member of the Bay Village Historic District Commission for a term expiring April 1st, 2026. Docket number 0294, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Catherine Sikora Nelson as a member of the Bay Village Historic District Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2026. And docket number 20295, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Stephen Dunwell Nelson as a member of the Bay Village Historic District Commission for a term expiring April 1st, 2026.
Thank you. Dockets number 0292 to 0295 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. We are now on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0296?
Docket number 0296, communication received by the city clerk from the Boston Landmarks Commission for City Council Action on the Designation of the Rope Walk in Charlestown.
Thank you. Docket number 0296 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, please read dockets number 0297 to 03...
Nope.
Oh, sorry. The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much. As the Chair of Planning, Development, and Transportation, I'd like to pass it to my colleague, Counselor Gabriela Coletta, to talk about this one.
Thank you. Counselor Coletta, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and thank you to... Great, and thank you to the Chair. I was going to ask if we can move to suspend and pass this communication from the Mayor. So recently, the Landmarks Commission has designated the Rope Walk in Charlestown, which is a treasured asset in our Navy Yard community, to be a historical landmark. Just some quick history here. The Rope Walk, located in the former Charlestown Navy Yard, is the only remaining granite rope walk in the United States. The design is unique and was developed specifically to accommodate the manufacture of rope. The Rope Walk produced all of the rope used by the U.S. Navy for over 100 years, and so there is significant history here. I'm really excited that the Landmarks decision decided to designate this as a landmark, and so I move that my colleagues support suspension and passing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta. This is for docket number 0296. The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin.
I'm sorry, I haven't done this before. I also move to suspend and pass and urge my colleagues to do the same.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0296. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket numbers 0297 to 0301?
Docket number 0297, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of September 27, 2023. Docket number 0298, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of November 29, 2023. Docket number 0299, notice received from the city clerk in accordance of Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of January 24, 2024. Docket number 0300, notice received from the mayor of her absence from the city on Tuesday, January 30, 2024, at 8:00 a.m., returning the same day, January 30, 2024, at 6:10 p.m. And docket number 0301, notice received from Counselor Mejia of her absence from the Boston City Council meeting on Wednesday, February 7, 2024.
Thank you. Dockets number 0297 to 031, 0301 will be placed on file. We are now on to matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0138.
Docket number 0138, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $146,089.77 in the form of a grant for the Fiscal Year 23 Violence Against Women Act, a stop grant awarded by the United States Department of Justice, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund a civilian domestic violence advocate who provides services for victims in Jamaica Plain, East Boston, and Charlestown, as well as overtime for all civilian domestic violence advocates citywide.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy.
Thank you. The Committee held a hearing on Monday, February 5, 2024. I was joined by Counselor Braden, the Vice Chair of this committee, Counselor Flynn, Weber, Louie Jean, Fitzgerald, Mejia, and Durkin. Jenna Savage, the Deputy Director of the Office of Research and Development, a civilian-only office within BPD that applies for grant funding, testified on behalf of the administration. It was explained that the office applies for grants to fund innovative evidence-based services beyond what the operating budget can cover. Thank you again to my colleagues who attended. We had a robust conversation, and we asked some great questions. I also want to thank Jenna again, who was not able to answer all our questions we had, but did a great job answering as much as she could. I have been in contact with Captain Detective Terry Thomas, who is in charge of the Family Justice Unit, and will continue my conversations with him to work in partnership to push this important work forward. I will also make sure that once our outstanding questions are answered, that all my colleagues receive a copy of them. As the Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, to which the following docket was referred, I am asking that we take a vote today and that this docket ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0138. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Mr. Clerk, will you please take a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0138. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta?
Yes.
Counselor Coletta, yes. Counselor Durkin?
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Luiz Jean?
Yes.
Counselor Luiz Jean, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin?
Yes.
Counselor Sotana?
Yes.
Counselor Weber?
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Aron?
Yes.
Counselor Aron, yes.
Thank you. The committee report...
Nine votes in that form.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0138 has passed. We are now moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0302?
Docket number 0302, Counselors Murphy and Peppin offer the following: a petition for a special law, an age waiver for the maximum age requirement for Paul O'Brien to join the Boston Police Department.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Fitzgerald as an original third sponsor.
Counselor Murphy seeks suspension of the rules to add Counselor Fitzgerald as a third original cosponsor.
I, oh, sorry.
Seeing and hearing, no objections. Counselor Fitzgerald is added as a third cosponsor. Counselor Murphy, you now have the floor.
Thank you. I also just want to thank my colleagues, Counselor Peppin, who is the High Park District Counselor where Paul O'Brien lives, and also Counselor Fitzgerald, where Paul O'Brien grew up. So thank you to my colleagues for supporting this. I also want to thank Counselor Coletta, the Chair of Government Operations, who has already committed to holding a speedy hearing so we can turn this around for a vote next week, hopefully. So thank you to the Chair for that. Paul O'Brien was born and raised in Dorchester, now resides in High Park with his wife and children. He has spent the last 11 years as a dedicated EMT with the Boston EMS. He has taken the civil service exam several times and has scored very well recently. Mr. O'Brien feels that he would be an excellent candidate for a position on the Boston, as a Boston police officer. And I agree. And I know my colleagues, Counselor Peppin and Fitzgerald, if they could speak, would stand up to say they also agree, but will be able to at the hearing that we have. His experience in many years working with EMS, working closely with the Boston police officers on all his calls. If you haven't yet, I do just recommend to all my colleagues that you do a ride along with the EMS. The amount of calls they get and how closely they do work with our fire and police is eye-opening. So assisting residents is something he has done for the past 11 years when they're in their most critical medical need. He has the ability to connect with people, remain calm under pressure, and de-escalate tension, all things I know that the Boston police would be very happy to take on. I look forward to the hearing and just want to thank the Chair, Counselor Coletta, for committing to having this quickly so we can hopefully turn this around and get it up to the State House. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Flynn, Weber, Aron, please add the Chair. Thank you. Docket number 0302 will refer to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0303?
Docket number 0303, Counselor Durkin offered the following: order for a hearing to review the rules and regulations of vehicles in relation to expansion of micro-mobility access.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Louie Jean. I've called a hearing, and I'm hoping my colleagues will join me. While expanding modes of travel bring new opportunities and new challenges, it also brings new challenges. The city needs to have a discussion around the rules and regulations to balance the new opportunity with these challenges. Safety on our streets and sidewalks is the number one concern I get from residents of District 8. At times, no matter what form of transportation you are using, it can feel like you need to be on high alert as you travel through the city. In a district where most of my constituents have the privilege of living within two miles of their destination, many residents are taking advantage of access to a variety of transportation options to get around. Particularly in these dense neighborhoods, this means the green choice and getting from point A to point B without a car. Therefore, we have, around the city, in our downtown neighborhoods in particular, a high volume of pedestrian and cyclists, who we know to be our most vulnerable road users. In fact, Boston's Vision Zero map reported in 2023 alarming number of over 3,000 injuries and 10 fatalities on the road from a motor vehicle, bicycle, or pedestrian crashes in the city of Boston. In one weekend in December, the city saw three traffic fatalities: one pedestrian, one cyclist, and one individual on a moped. For the safety and survival of all who travel throughout Boston, the city needs to uphold more than just a nominal commitment to our Vision Zero standards to eliminate fatal and serious traffic crashes in the city by 2030. Thankfully, the city is taking steps to improve safety on our streets and sidewalks. I want to thank the Boston Transportation Department for a host of initiatives they have recently undertaken to improve transportation safety across the city, including their free-to-learn bike workshops, small-scale safety improvements around intersections, slow streets initiatives in residential and school areas... in residential and school areas, and a new safety surge implementing thousands of speed humps citywide. BTD is not the only department stepping up to ensure safety for road users, though I want to commend the Boston Disabilities Commission for their work on the Boston Brakes Campaign to raise awareness of and increase safety for pedestrians with disabilities. We all know too well, many of us from personal experience or the experience of friends, that an unsafe pedestrian environment poses a special risk to aging populations and those with disabilities. So, thank you to the Disability Commission for kicking off these efforts to care for our most vulnerable road users. Our streets and sidewalks have always been home to a variety of users, from pedestrians to cyclists to drivers. But with an ever-growing transportation network to support an ever-growing number of modes of transportation, it is imperative that the relevant departments sit down to have a conversation about how all road users can operate safely. For efficiency, for our environment, and for our health, our urban transportation environment needs to be multimodal. But our urban transportation environment cannot safely support these, this multimodal universe without proper rules and regulations that leave no road user unclear about what behaviors and travel patterns that are allowable and those that are not. Changes to the way people interact with our streetscape, including new infrastructure and new vehicles, requires a conversation about how to mediate and mitigate conflict amidst these challenges. For the safety and peaceful enjoyment of all going from work to home, to home to the park, or to the park to the grocery store, I look forward to joining my council colleagues and city departments together for this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Durkin. Uh, the Chair recognizes Council Coletta. Council Coletta, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I rise to simply thank the Maker for putting this forward. Um, I really look forward to this conversation as somebody who is a conscientious pedestrian. I don't have a car. I love to walk everywhere in the city, understanding that climate and mobility are intrinsically linked, um, to try to reduce our carbon emissions as, as an individual. Um, and so I, you know, I'm heartened to hear about the e-bikes and the inclusion of scooters here in this order. I'm a big fan of scooters, just seeing that, um, they are zero carbon emissions, and there's a lot of opportunity to connect folks who live in last-mile neighborhoods. Um, I'm thinking particularly in, in Orient Heights, at, at BHA Orient Heights, um, and understanding how we could, um, get them to the places that they want to go quickly and without issue and, and affordably. So, I thank you so much for your leadership on this, and I look forward, as somebody who loves, um, rules and regulations, of understanding how we could share the road together. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Coletta. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the sponsor, and please add my name. I do want to acknowledge that this is a critical and important issue for all residents, and as someone that has elderly parents who have a disabled grandson that stays with them, when my parents and their grandson are walking the streets of South Boston, it's, it's very unsafe. And when they're in the crosswalk, cars will speed by them, maybe going 40 miles an hour, maybe going 50 miles an hour. They're walking up to the Southie Library, or they're walking to the supermarket, or to Gate of Heaven or St. Bridgetts. And the disregard people have for our seniors in persons with disabilities is blatant. It's, it's so obvious. And it's a criti-, it's critical we support our seniors with safe streets so that they're able to walk and enjoy their neighborhood. But residents don't like to get out of their homes now because the cars are driving at excessive speeds. 25 miles an hour going down Silver Street, 25 miles an hour going down Gold Street, or West Fort Street, or East Fifth Street, or K Street, or L Street. It's excessive. I want to see the speed limit reduced from 25 to 20, maybe even 15. It's not about the car, it's about the, it's about the pedestrian crossing the street. We need to provide them with safe streets, safe sidewalks. We also see parents taking their kids to school, crossing in the crosswalk, and cars speeding right by them, a mother holding the child, child's hand. And cars will go by them 40 miles an hour, one foot away from them. I want to, I'd love to see a designated Boston Police Traffic Enforcement Team in every neighborhood so we can deal with this critical public safety issue. Again, want to say thank you to the sponsor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council Flynn. The Chair recognizes Council Braden. You now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I also rise to thank my colleague, Council Durkin, for bringing this forward. Uh, we have, um, you know, I think it's wonderful that we have more of these micro-mobility devices available to, to reduce our carbon input and, and footprint in the city. Uh, but we've had recent, uh, we had a recent fatality in Alston Brighton where a young man on an e-bike was hit by a, a truck and died, sadly died. Um, it seems like when the police investigated that he, he, he pressed the button to go on a pedestrian, across pedestrian crossing on the e-bike, but he didn't wait for the signal to cross over, and he was hit by the bicycle. Um, we had, I, I witnessed in the last couple of weeks, um, I was stopped at a crosswalk in Brighton Center, and there was pedestrians were walking across, an elderly person, uh, and I was stopped, but an, a scooter, an e-scooter went flying past and narrowly missed the person. And if an elder gets hit and knocked down, uh, and they break a leg, or it's, it's really, really detrimental to their life, um, and may actually be fatal depending on their, their health status. Uh, on Soldier Street Road last week, I was stopped at a red light, and four cars passed me and went through on red. So, I think, uh, I really welcome, uh, looking at the rules and regulations for the micro-mobility devices. I think we all have responsibility to use the roads responsibly, pedestrians, uh, people using micro, micro-mobility devices, and also our car drivers and, and vehi-, vehicle drivers. So, I welcome this conversation. I think there's a lot of work to do, and I really do wish we could get to net, uh, to, you know, zero deaths on our roads in Boston. Thank you. And please add my, please add my name.
Thank you, Council Braden. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Again, I want to thank the Chair for this filing. It's obviously an important conversation for us to ensure pedestrian, uh, pedestrian safety as we work towards achieving micro-mobility here in the city. So, thank you for this filing. And similar to Council Coletta, looking forward to this conversation. Uh, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Weber, Worrell, please add the Chair. Thank you. Docket number 030, just want to check the right number, 0303, will refer to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number 0304?
Document number 0304, Councilors Flynn and Murphy offer the following: Resolution celebrating Lunar New Year.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Honored to partner with Council Murphy on this important resolution, as we recognize Lunar New Year. I'm proud to represent the largest Asian community in Boston. Not only in Chinatown, but the South End has a large Asian community, as does the Bay Village and parts of South Boston as well. We're celebrating the Year of the Dragon, but we're really also celebrating the incredible contributions and sacrifices the AAPI, Asian American Pacific Island, community has made to our city and to our country. And I, I just wanted to highlight one story, if, if I may, that we've also seen a huge increase throughout this country, throughout the world, in anti-Asian racism and hate crimes against the Asian community. At the start of the, at the very beginning of the pandemic, I held the first neighborhood meeting in the country on COVID-19 before it actually reached the United States. And I, I, I called for this because my staff were following this issue very closely, and I have a wonderful team of professionals, and several, several of them are from China. And we followed this issue closely. And we had this hearing at Josiah Quincy School in Chinatown with the public health professionals, with civil rights leaders, and it was a very informative discussion. And the most important part of that discussion was a young woman, high school student from either Boston Latin or Boston Latin Academy, raised her hand and wanted to speak. And when she got up and she said to me that when she would go to school over the last several days on the MB, on the MBTA train, I believe it was the Orange Line, but when she got on the train, the white people on the train would leave. This is, this is an Asian, young Asian woman. They would, they would get off the train because they associated her with COVID-19, with the pandemic. And that story stayed with me. And what happened immediately after that is President Trump escalated this, this issue significantly by blaming not just the Chinese community, but blaming almost all Asians as if they were responsible for this pandemic. His reckless speech also had a significant impact on hate crimes and anti-Asian racism. And in the most progressive city in the country, right here in Boston, we also experienced hate crimes against our Asian neighbors. So, I wanted to celebrate the contributions of the Asian community because they've really contributed to our city and to our country, along with so many other ethnic groups as well. This country has a long history of anti-Asian racism. And I might be going on a little too long, but I just wanted to highlight one more, one more story is the Transcontinental Railroad connecting the East Coast and the West Coast was built primarily by Chinese immigrants, along with, along with Irish immigrants, mostly, mostly the Chinese. And when they had that famous photo in Utah celebrating the connection of the East and West Coast, there wasn't one Asian person in the photo. Shortly after that, this country enacted the Chinese Exclusion Act, the first time where we ensured that not one, that we would single out an ethnic group not to come into this, into the United States. So, I stand with my colleagues. We also are proud of, of the first Asian-American mayor in the city, Mayor Wu as well. But we have a lot of work to do in support of our immigrant neighbors, whether it's language and communication access, ensuring that they're treated with respect and dignity. And I'm honored to highlight these issues and support our Asian community and celebrate Lunar New Year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council Flynn. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you now have the floor.
And thank you, Councilor Flynn, for letting me join you on this and also always uplifting the needs of our AAPI communities. My team was just at the Chinatown Safety Meeting earlier today, so we always hear directly in our office the, um, concerns that you are always uplifting to make sure that we're addressing the quality of life issues for all our residents here in the city of Boston. But as we know, we are in Lunar New Year month celebration. We've already started. We've already begun celebrating. On Friday, Councilor Flynn and I joined the community at the Murphy School for their Tet Celebration. As many of you know, there's a large Vietnamese community in Fields Corner, which is now rightfully named Little Saigon, so that was a wonderful celebration. And many of us were at Tet Boston over the weekend also celebrating, and there'll be many more celebrations. So, the celebrations are important to learn about the cultural, um, you know, contributions that the AAPI community offers our city, but it's also important to make sure that we are uplifting the needs of our communities, um, all across the city and not just in Chinatown. I know in the South End, there's also a large AAPI community, and Councilor Braden's district, Brighton Alston, has a lot of, um, Asian families there too. So, thank you, and I look forward to celebrating with my colleagues this month.
Thank you. Uh, the Chair recognizes Council Durkin. Council Durkin, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much, um, to Council Flynn and Council Murphy for sponsoring this resolution. Um, I'm proud to have a very close-knit relationship with a lot of the Asian populations of my district and across Boston because of my former work, um, working with Mayor Wu. Um, so, it's been incredible to, every year, celebrate the Lunar New Year with red envelopes, dragon and lion dances. Um, and I, I think this year is particularly interesting because the Year of the Dragon is one of power, strength, good luck, and wisdom, which is things that the city council needs in spades to survive and do the work that we do. So, I'm proud to join, uh, my neighbors in District 8, which I think we're, uh, Council Flynn and I are in competition for the most Asian district thanks to a lot of the students up the population of my district, District 8. So, I'm proud to, uh, welcome so many, um, people to my district, um, who are here sometimes for short periods of time, but we'll have a lot of celebrations, and I'll be stopping in Council Flynn's district, actually, I think, this weekend for one of the banquets. So, excited, uh, for banquet season, excited to celebrate the Lunar New Year, and, um, to our neighbors, um, we can't wait to celebrate with you. I wish I was wearing red today, so we'll have to start wearing red all month, but, uh, thank you all, and thank you for sponsoring this.
Thank you, Council Durkin. The Chair recognizes Council Braden.
Thank you, Madam President. I think I need to do a count. I also represent a district with a very, um, significant Asian population, so I think I might pip some of these guys at the post when it comes to having Asians in our neighborhood. Many of the, uh, very proud to represent Alston Brighton and the Asian population in Alston Brighton, uh, many of whom were displaced from Chinatown when the Pike was built through, um, the, the mass Pike extension was built, and many people were displaced, and many came and chose to live in, in Alston Brighton. So, uh, I really, uh, this is a wonderful time of the year. It's great to go and visit the, the Chinese Golden Age Center and, uh, celebrate, uh, also in the True Life community, celebrate the Lunar New Year, Lunar New Year, New Year, sorry, I'm tongue-tied today. Um, so, I just want to add my name and just uplift the incredible contributions of our AAPI population in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. Um, and I just want to say to, uh, our Asian community here, Gung Hae Fat Choi, as we celebrate the Year of the Dragon, um, it has been and it always is an incredible honor to celebrate along all of our cultures here in the city of Boston. I know district councils are competing, but as an at-large city council, I think I represent the most, so, um, everyone, everyone and every culture, and it is such a joy. It was a joy to be at the Cruzport this weekend with our Vietnamese community and celebrating Tet and giving out the red envelopes. And so, I just want to say again, uh, Happy Year of the Dragon, Happy Lunar New Year. And we know that there are still isms that persist, and there are still difficulties, uh, what a lot of, uh, folks often call bamboo ceilings for our Asian community in, in the professional setting and in limitations and in ways oftentimes feel unseen. So, we see you, we hear you, and we celebrate you. And as we celebrate, as we do with everyone, we recognize the work that is to come. So, thank you very much. Uh, the Chair, uh, Council Flynn and Council Murphy seek suspension of the rules. Uh, would anyone else like to add their name? Uh, Mr. Clerk, can you please add Councilors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Weber, Worrell, and please add the Chair? Council Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0305. All in favor say aye. Oh, uh, thank you. Doc, Council Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0304. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. Document number 0304 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0305?
Document number 0305, Council Flynn offer the following: Resolution in support of Senate 3526, Lactation Spaces for Veteran Moms Act.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I rise to ask my colleagues to support me in a resolution, a federal resolution, proposal legis-, legislation in support of 3526. It's a Senate bill that would provide lactation spaces for veteran moms. It's sponsored by a U.S. Senator out of Nevada, Senator Rosen. And what this bill would do, what this legislation would do, it would- And what this bill would do, what this legislation would do, it would ensure that every VA medical center in the country has this space so a woman veteran is able to use this. We have two incredibly successful VA hospitals right here in Boston, Jamaica Plain and West Roxbury. Brockton is not too far. A lot of Boston veterans, women veterans, go to this, go to both, all three of these facilities. But this federal legislation would ensure that a lactation space for women veterans would be required in each facility. Women veterans are the fastest-growing population of veterans in the country, but they don't have the services in support that they have earned. The government is not giving them anything. They've earned these benefits. They've earned these rights. They're not treated with the respect and dignity. A woman veteran has distinct medical needs that the VA at times is not providing them. Yes, this is a federal legislation, but it's impacting our constituents. That's why I'm rising to ask my colleagues to support this critical legislation. I'm going down to Washington for the Disabled American Veterans Conference in March to advocate for this on Capitol Hill, along with other issues. We had a wonderful presentation today recognizing many veterans in the African-American community. And what I want to do as the Veterans Chair is to educate my colleagues about veterans' issues, about issues impacting military families. We can't turn our back on veterans. We can't turn our back on military families. We can go to Veterans Day and say thank you to a veteran, but are we backing that up? Are we advocating for them? Are we voting for them? Are we supporting the budget in the city of Boston, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts at the federal level? Or are we just saying thank you? Thank you to the veteran for your service. I want us to come together as a body and support veterans and support the city of Boston Veteran Services that play a critical role in our city. Rob Santiago is probably one of the best commissioners there are in the country. I know one of his assistants is here right now, Elliot, a community relations specialist, also a U.S. Army veteran as well. But when we go into budget season, let's not balance the budget on the backs of veterans, on military families. This budget for the city of Boston supports low-income veterans. It supports women veterans. And yes, unfortunately, we voted to cut veterans' budget last year, $1 million. The biggest disappointment in my political career for seven years was the vote we took last year to cut almost $1 million from the city of Boston Veterans Department. I bring that up not to be, not to divide this body, but I bring it up to, for us to acknowledge that this happened recently. And I want us to come together and learn about veterans' issues. If you voted against the budget, well, there's another budget coming up. And I would ask you to learn more about veterans' issues, how they're impacting our wonderful people that were here today, how they're impacting women veterans, veterans with disabilities, families. So this federal legislation would be critical. Again, I'm going down to Washington, D.C. in the next month. If anyone wants to learn more about veterans' issues, please let me know. I'd be glad to bring you to so many different advocates across the city so we can support veterans, especially during the budget process. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, will you please add Counselors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Murphy, Weber, Worrell, and please add the chair? Counselor Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0305. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Doubt the vote? Mr. Clerk, will you please do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0305. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta, yes. Counselor Braden. I mean, Durkin, sorry. Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Jen.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Jen, yes. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin. Counselor Santana. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket number 0305 has received nine votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0305 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0306? And will the Vice President please come through the desk? Thank you.
Docket number 0306. Counselors Louie Jen and Coletta offered the following: Resolution in support of the Creative Space Preservation Act, Senate Number 530 and House Number 3241.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Madam President Louie Jen. Madam President, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice President, and I thank you, and I thank my colleagues. I'd like to suspend the rules, seek suspension of the rules, and to add Counselor Braden as a third co-sponsor on this docket.
Seeking suspension of the rules, Counselor Braden would be added as the original co-sponsor.
Thank you. I rise in support of this legislation that is very important to creating special protections for our creative spaces throughout the city. I want to thank my co-sponsors. This is an issue that was brought to us, to our attention by Zoo Mix and a bunch of other organizations that are in the creative space, and we are thinking that it's going to pass in this session that will really give cities a local option of creating safe space, of creating zone spaces for creative spaces. That will allow cities to be able to decide to create special funds for these districts so that we can create more spaces for the creative, for creative arts. There are so many, and I'm happy that Counselor Braden is on this because there are so many instances in which we've been losing our creative artistic spaces throughout the city, including in Austin-Brighton. I know that this is an issue that Counselor Fernandez-Anderson cares deeply about in her district. So I want to support the champions of this bill, the sponsors, including Senator Miranda, who has been a champion of this, so that we can make sure that we are bringing out the creative talent of our city and making sure that every, we are maximizing how we can use our government dollars to support our artists and those in the arts. So I'm also seeking suspension and passage. So thank you, Vice President, and thank you to my colleagues.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Coletta, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Vice President, and I want to thank the lead sponsor for looping me in and also my colleagues for their work, collective work in this space. I rise today in support of the Creative Space Preservation Act. This legislation aims to define land use restrictions in mass general law that would enable municipalities to opt in and utilize this tool to protect and create arts, culture, and creative spaces. We know we have challenges as it relates to this topic and requires exploration of creative solutions such as this. Last year, I held a hearing on the loss of music rehearsal space and other losses of spaces across Boston that support people in this industry. The catalyst was the closing of the last music rehearsal space in Charlestown and before that, the Sound Museum in Brighton. As the city grows up and out in square footage, and many have prospered in this exponential growth, Boston's artists and creatives have not shared in this prosperity. It's almost like Boston's development goes like this in terms of square footage, and then the square footage goes down. It's an X sort of dynamic, and it's, it's pretty sad. And our legacy as a vibrant and culturally rich city is at stake. So during the development review process, there are mechanisms to compel proponents to fund and create affordable housing and workforce development. This is linkage, of course. And then in addition to that, there are ad hoc community mitigation payments to parks and public realm improvements, and the list goes on and on. And the list of population to protect from displacement and priorities to fund are long. We all know this. But usually overlooked and last to be funded are investments in protecting and creating arts and cultural spaces. I've been in deep partnership with MoAC and the BPDA, and I actually wrote a letter as part of the Squares and Streets zoning to embed this sort of zoning, and we might not need it because hopefully we can able, we are able to opt into this and bake in a provision that would require a one-to-one replacement of arts and culture square footage or a payment in lieu of. This would ensure that there would be no net loss of spaces, which is a goal, a general goal of the city. So I want to thank again the sponsors up at the State House for putting this forward, and I encourage my colleagues to put this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta. Counselor Braden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very happy to add my name to this resolution in support of this. Counselor Coletta's already referenced the displacement of and the loss of rehearsal spaces in our, in our communities, but also we have to recognize that the arts and, arts and culture are an essential part of our local economy here in, in Boston. And we've lost places, like small venues like Great Scott and other, other small venues across the city that were very important spaces for our music and performance community to, to show and develop their, their talent and their, showcase their, their wonderful range of cultural offerings from music, spoken word, all sorts of artist, artistic endeavors. And we, we, as Counselor Coletta said, these are the last, sort of on the bottom of the list when it comes to prioritizing protections and to present, prevent displacement. So I'm very happy to sign, sign on to this and hope that this initiative gets passed at the State House. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Counselor Durkin, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much to Council President Louie Jen, Counselor Gigi Coletta, and Counselor Liz Braden, and obviously to the sponsor at the State House, Senator Liz Miranda, who I share Mission Hill with, and it's been an honor to work with her. My district has a lot of, of these spaces from, from one day a year at Fenway Porchfest, from Big Night Live, TD Garden, Paradise Rock Club, and the House of Blues, which I was at recently. Our arts ecosystem of where people are able to perform is just so incredible, and this is just from the music space, but all arts spaces are so important. So I think it's so important that we create this creative ecosystem, and I really thank everyone for drawing attention to this bill, which I will be following now this year. And I'm proud to also add my name and support this endeavor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. Would anyone else like to speak? Would anyone else like to add their name? Please add Counselor Durkin, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Weber, and please add Counselor Worrell. Counselor Louie Jen seeks suspension of the rules and the adoption of docket number 0306. All those in favor, say yea.
Aye.
All right. Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on docket number 0306. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Jen.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Jen, yes. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin. Counselor Santana. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket number 0306 has received nine votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Clerk. Docket number 0306 has been adopted.
And I also wanted to mention Representative Dan Cahill is a co-sponsor of this legislation, the Creative Spaces Preservation Act, so wanted to thank him as well, and we hope that this goes forward. Mr. Clerk, we are now moving on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the personnel orders? Oh, oh, sorry. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0307?
Docket number 0307. Counselor Worrell offered the following: Resolution celebrating the 50th anniversary of Grenada's independence.
The chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Happy to introduce this resolution celebrating the 50th anniversary of Grenada's independence. Knowing Grenada's rich history, I can attest to the warmth and vibrancy of their culture. Recently, Logan Airport started offering direct trips from Boston to Grenada. So if anyone's looking for a good destination for summer February vacation, Grenada's a good place to visit, strengthening our ties and even deeper relationship with Grenada. As we prepare to celebrate this milestone, I invite you to join us for our flag raising, which is going to be taking place on February 9th at 12:00 p.m. at the City Hall Plaza. After the ceremony, there will be entertainment and snacks in the Pier Monte Room, and we'll be joined by his excellent Tarly Francis, Ambassador of Grenada for the United States, who leads this great occasion. So just hope to see you guys there to celebrate the rich culture and the Grenadian people here in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I'm looking to see suspension and passage of this resolution.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I'll just say happy independent state to the people of Grenada, island in the Caribbean, and we have a small but mighty Grenada, oh, population here. The chair recognizes Counselor Weber.
Thank you very much. Put up to this by Counselor Worrell, but as a track fan and somebody who ran the 400 meters in college, I'd just like to recognize Grenada athlete named Karani James. He won the world championships in 2011 as an 18-year-old. He won the gold medal at the 2012 Olympics. He's won the silver medal at the 2016 Olympics, bronze in, in 2020. And he's one of the greatest 400-meter runners of all time, a wonderful product of Grenada. And I hope my fellow city councils will be rooting for him to, to do well in the Olympics this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Weber. If I'm not mistaken, we have here on the eighth, ninth floor, Zaz, Chef Ulri, who is Grenadian. And so shout out to our Grenadian community and all they do to work for the city and feed us here in City Hall. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, and Weber, and please add the chair. We are now moving on to personnel. Oh, okay. All the, Counselor Worrell seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0307. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you. Docket number 0307 has passed. We are now moving on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the personnel orders?
Docket number 0308. Counselor Louie Jen for Counselor Mejia. Docket number 0309. Counselor Louie Jen for Counselor Mejia. Docket number 0310. Counselor Louie Jen for Counselor Durkin. Docket number 0311. Counselor Louie Jen for Counselor Santana. Counselor, docket number 0312. Counselor Louie Jen for Counselor Santana. And docket number 0313. Counselor Louie Jen for Counselor Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair moves for passage of dockets number 0308 to 03013. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you. The personnel, personnel orders have been adopted. We are now moving on to green sheets. Is anyone looking to pull anything from the green sheets? We are now moving on to late files. Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you please read each, we'll vote on each late file individually. I'm informed by the clerk that there are six late file matters. We will vote on each late file matter individually.
There's three absence letters.
Three absence letters, okay.
And one order from Counselor, and Counselor, and two personnel. And then one, and three personnel. from four, and three personnel.
Can we vote on the personnel?
You have to accept them all as the, the general.
Okay, will you read each?
I'll do this one first.
First late filed a matter offered by Councilors Erin Murphy and Ed Flynn, where, uh, in order for a hearing to discuss the safety of our city workers, in particular our code enforcement and Boston Transportation Department workers. Whereas our city workers are essential to keeping the city moving forward and for delivering city services that improve the quality of life for all our residents, be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council holds a hearing to address the safety of our city workers who are working on our streets. Representatives from the Mayor's Office, Boston Transportation Department, AskMe93, representatives and other interested parties shall be invited to attend, in addition to members of the public, our courage to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I am going to ask my colleagues if they could file this next week, and I say that because there is another colleague who wanted to file late files, who, and I asked if, under rule 33, uh, if we could, if she could file them next week. So I will be objecting to the filing of the late file, just that we are trying our best on this body to, uh, discourage late files, and I want to make sure that I'm being fair to everyone at the same time. I will allow, Council Murphy, you can speak, but I am going to be objecting to this late file.
So I agree that late files for no good reason, just because we didn't get them in time, is something we should not approve on this body, but this came to my attention after 10 o'clock on Monday morning, and then I met with some union representatives Monday afternoon and thought it was important that we uplift this today, so I do just want to speak on it a little bit, um, because it is, it's with a heavy heart that I and my colleague, Council Flynn, have to file hearing orders to discuss the safety of our employees, our city workers. We often support them when it comes to contracts, making sure that we're trying to give them the best, you know, um, pay and benefits, but we also have to make sure that they're safe at work. They're essential to keeping our city moving forward, and many of our city employees work long hours and overnight, many are forced to take overtime shifts because of the chronic staffing issues. These dedicated city workers are in dangerous situations at times. It is our responsibility to make sure all our employees have the tools and supports they need to feel safe and to execute their duties effectively. Last week alone, there were two assaults on our Boston Transportation Department employees. One older gentleman, who's only months away from retirement, was so badly beaten that he has been in the hospital after needing surgeries to operate on wounds caused by severe trauma to his face. We have heard from many city employees who have real concerns for their own safety but are afraid to speak up in fair retribution. It is important that the city council acts to uplift their voices and provide them with any additional tools or staffing supports they may need. So I do hope that we could file this into the committee so we could schedule a hearing to talk about the importance of the safe work environment for our city employees. And I would have filed this on time, and I did take your first meeting's recommendation that we don't file as many late files because it does extend meetings and people schedule things after. We have busy schedules. You and I both, as we represent the whole city, know that we are pulled in many directions. I do just ask because of our, this is about our city employees that we represent, that we place this into committee after the Council Flynn can speak on it.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like Councilor Murphy stated, a lot of the issues we learn about take place over the weekend, and sometimes we don't find out about it until late Sunday or Monday, which is after the, Monday morning, actually, which is after the deadline, but these are, these are critical issues that are impacting our dedicated and professional city employees. You know, the traffic enforcement from the Boston Transportation Department, they're, they're harassed all day long by the public. They're verbally assaulted. They're physically assaulted. They're disrespected every day. It impacts them, it impacts their family. It's a job that doesn't get the respect that it deserves. But there they are, doing their best on behalf of the residents of Boston, and they are being subjected to verbal abuse, to physical abuse. I saw a photo of a older gentleman that was beat up from the Boston Transportation Department, beat up. And it was discouraging to see that. That could have been someone's father, that could have been, been someone's spouse or child. But because people have a bad day and they come back to their car and there's a ticket there, and they were 15 minutes late, and they have to pay a fine, well, don't take it out on the traffic enforcement professional. Prepare your schedule better. But the disrespect that I've witnessed for, for decent people, longtime residents of the city, continues to grow, and we need to stand with these city workers. They don't make a lot of money. They don't have the influence. They don't get the respect, but they're our neighbors. They're active in our community. They're active, they're, they're Little League coaches. They're, they're helping the seniors with meals. They're part of the community, they deserve respect, they are not getting it. I want some answers from city officials immediately on how we're going to protect these dedicated city employees, and many of them are women. A lot of women are getting, getting beat up by the public because of, because someone got a ticket. So as you probably can tell, I'm frustrated, but I think we need to be there for our dedicated city employees because they're there, they're there for us, and they're part of our family, they're part of our city. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Durkin. Council Durkin, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much, Council President. Um, I just wanted to flag, um, and, and I, hearing about that, that's so horrifying, and I'm so hurt, sorry for that individual that went through that. Um, I just wanted to flag, um, there are a lot of things in this hearing order that refer to a collective bargaining, so while it may seem that this should go to development planning and transportation, I really would advocate for this to go to city services because it, um, and then within, um, and then obviously continue to, within the hearing, keep it to what we're able to do without, um, engaging in collective bargaining agreements because there, there are so that, some things that are touching on in this hearing that I think need to be, uh, brought up with collective bargaining with the union and can't be done inside a hearing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor Durkin. I care deeply about the safety of our city workers. Uh, they've elevated issues to me that I have brought to the administration and have either solved or we will continue to work on. Um, I just want to note again, the fir, the very first meeting that we had, uh, with the second meeting after the January 1st meeting, I rule 15 to myself because there was a filing and I, the filing was similar to mine, and therefore I could not put my filing. So I'm applying it equitably across the board. However, it is true that sometimes we hear about matters after the filing deadline. Rule 33 asks you in the order if it is a late file to have an emergency declaration. So I will not be objecting to this late file, and I will be placing it, um, in committee, but going forward, should there be, uh, further late files on substantive matters, there should be that emergency declaration language in the order pursuant to rule 33, trying to make sure that we apply the rules here. Um, I will allow this late file, and I will apologize to my colleague who, um, uh, wanted to file. I just want to make sure that we are applying the rules fairly across the board. Council Flynn, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I would.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just on the late files, as, as I mentioned, a lot happens over the weekend, especially for district councilors. We're in the neighborhood every day, we're hearing about issues that happen on a Saturday or on a, on a Sunday, on a Monday. And then if there's no, if there's not a hearing that week, or the following week, I should say, you know, the time has passed without any type of action by city councilors. I, I would like us to reconsider that, Madam Chair, because...
Mr. Flynn, I stated, uh, Council Flynn, I stated that I will be, I will be...
No, no, I, I understand, I understand, I understand, Madam Chair. I, I would like for us to reconsider that policy because, you know, this party should, we should be here really to the end of the day, until 5 o'clock, listening to matters. We don't need to be out of here by 2 o'clock or 2:30. Let's do the people's business, however, however long it takes. Let's be here till 7 o'clock, but let's not cut the business of the city down because we want to get out of here early on a Wednesday. Our constituents elected us to, to, to be here full-time, every day, Saturday and Sunday, working 12, 15 hours a day. The least we can do is, is put in a full day's work. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council Flynn, and again, pursuant to the rules, late files are allowed. They need an emergency declaration in the text. It really is a matter of making sure the public has 48 hours' notice. That's why the late files. Late files are permissible. I want to make that very clear. Pursuant to the rules, we want to make sure that it's very clear why we're filing a late file and the late file matter itself in the text. That's what the rules require. Would anyone else like to speak on the matter? Uh, Mr. Clerk, we probably need a vote to accept the late file. Okay, okay. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Brayden, Coletta, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Weber, Worrell. Please add the Chair. This docket will be referred to the, this late file is accepted, and this docket will be referred to the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the additional late files?
Two personnel...
Two personnel orders and...
And three...
And three absence letters. I'm informed by the clerk that there are five additional late files, uh, two personnel orders, and three absence letters. All in favor of accepting the late file matters say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, the late file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, please read the late file matters into the record.
First late file matter is a personnel order from, for Council Louie Jean, for Council Brayden.
The Chair moves for passage of the late file matter. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Second late file matter from Councilor Louie Jean, for Councilor Brayden. Personnel order.
The Chair moves for passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Uh, absence letter from Councilors Julia Mejia and Enrique Peppin. Please be advised that we will not be in attendance today at the City Council meeting. Uh, we are traveling to Washington, DC upon invitation to attend the annual Dominicans on the Hill event. Our staff will be in attendance, and we will review the tape of the meeting when it comes, becomes available. Sincerely, Councilor Peppin and Councilor Mejia.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. There are two additional late files? Okay.
Placed on file.
Oh, these matters will be placed on file.
Yes, second absence letter from Councilor Tanya Fernandez Anderson. I hope this message finds you well. I regret to inform you that I'd be unable to attend today's City Council meeting. I review the recordings of my records and will follow up with all matters that require my attention or input. Thank you, Councilor Fernandez Anderson.
Thank you. This late file matter, absence letter will be, uh, will be, uh, placed on file.
Third absence letter, Councilor, from Councilor Henry Santana. I regret to inform you that I'd be not able to attend today's City Council meeting. I am currently in Washington, DC, attending the annual Dominicans on the Hill event. While my staff will be present, I will review the meeting tape at my earliest convenience. Sincerely, Council Santana.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Clerk. We are...
Please.
Oh, these matters will be placed on file. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that, zip...
About that, thank you.
Point of order on rule?
Yes, definitely. Um, thank you for, you know, specifying the reason, for making sure that we follow the rules. I love rules and also like to follow them, but could you please clarify why we will accept personnel orders if there's no emergency language in personnel orders? I understand absent letters sometimes are written the morning of, if you find out last minute, just so we're all clear, if those still continue to be able to be filed after Monday attendance?
Yes, personnel orders and, personnel orders, resolutions, it's really substantive filings that are important for the public, for the 48-hour notice. That's why substantive filings, really that emergency declaration is really important. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are no additions to the consent agenda. Good job, y'all. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We are now on to announcements. Um, on behalf, I think Council Worrell mentioned, uh, the, uh, flag raising for Grenada, which will be happening on Friday at noon. Um, we also, the City Council's Black History Month event will be on February 21st here in chambers, looking forward to that. Uh, do any of my colleagues have any announcements? The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to discuss something that's important to me and my constituents. I'd like to give a, this announcement and provide a little bit of an update on a hearing order last week with Councilor Murphy regarding a for-profit urgent care center proposal on West Broadway, less than a block from the South Boston Community Health Center. As you all know, we, we also called for this hearing in the wake of Stewart healthcare crisis and similar concerns on for-profit healthcare and the ripple effect it has on access and quality. Thank you to Councilor Fitzgerald for bringing us together today at the Conny Hospital to discuss this, discuss this issue. I talked about concerns from my constituents across South Boston as it relates to South Boston Health Center, including our seniors, persons with disabilities, communities of color, immigrant neighbors, our most vulnerable in BHA public housing developments in Mariel McCormick, where I was last night, talking to residents with Council, with former Councilor Kenzie Bork, West Broadway, West 9th Street, Old Colony. At that time, I tried to sound the alarm and warn that this could be the first shoe to drop if we have for-profit urgent care facilities in my neighborhood, possibly with investments like we're seeing across the country and across the city with private equity firms, venture capital funds. They could eventually look to pop up a block from other community health centers across the city. In my district, city councilors know the critical role they play in their neighborhoods, threaten the health, health services they provide, cutting staff, services, programs, like the Cardman Square, Selkow, Bowdoin Street, East Boston, Fenway, just to name a few. But to get back to my point, the proposal in South Boston was highly unusual from the start, and about its meeting date and zoning board of appeals date a week almost apart for the largest for-profit urgent care company in the country was, was going to come to South Boston, and a vote was going to take place at the ZBA. But through the advocates and advocacy of my neighbors across South Boston and South Boston elected officials, we're able to breathe a sigh of relief that the proponent formally withdrew his request at the zoning board yesterday. Unfortunately, this good news for public health and my constituent, constituents was short-lived. As I read a news report late last night that the BPDA had recommended approval of this for-profit urgent clear, urgent care clinic and a memo... this for-profit urgent clear, urgent care clinic and a memo that they sent to the ZBA. I was in shock and disbelief when I read this, before tracking down the memo and reading it for myself, where it made, and there's no other way to say it, a dishonest leap that the largest for-profit urgent care company in the country, that it made sense on West Broadway due to its close proximity of the neighborhood community health center, as if they complement each other. It was the fir, it was the first reason they listed, this is unconscionable. I am concerned about this and communicated as much this morning and last night to the mayor's office, to the BPDA. So I'm going to be as polite as I can, but I think everyone knows here and in the city, if you come after my constituents, will then be prepared for battle. We call ourselves the most progressive city in the country, and after all we have heard for 15 years about the profit motive in healthcare, the BPDA was ready to recommend and stick the largest for-profit urgent care company in the country a block away from the nonprofit health center. Incredibly shortsighted. It would have put the public health of the town at risk in the long term. In the final analysis, the South Boston Community Health Center has been invaluable to this community, 50 years, serving 70,000 patients annually, while the largest for-profit urgent care company in the country offers a fraction of the services and can pack up and leave at any time if they're unhappy with their profit margin, and we're all left to pick up the pieces. This was not a close call. The BPDA showed poor judgment and ruthless disregard for the welfare of the people of South Boston, and I felt I owed it to my constituents and the residents of the city to express my severe disappointment with BPDA for this terrible recommendation that they made. It happened in South Boston, it could happen in your district as well, unless we stand together and let the BPDA know that community health centers are part of our city, they're part of our community. They provide critical healthcare to residents in need, as I mentioned, communities of color, immigrant neighbors, residents in BHA. Short-sighted for this BPDA team to do that. I met with them today, and as you probably can tell, I'm disappointed, and I'm still looking for more answers from the BPDA team. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy.
Thank you. I just want to rise and say thank you to the South Boston elected officials, Counselor Flynn, our colleague, but also Senator Collins, Rep. Baillie, and Congressman Lynch. They were successful in blocking this for-profit health center. I know Counselor Flynn explained some information we found out after, which isn't hap, we're not happy about that, but I do, as an at-large counselor, take this as a lesson on how we work together with our state and federal colleagues to make sure that they know that when we do work together, we can block things, and if this happened in East Boston, near the East Boston Health Center, Codman Square, and a Ponce, that me, as an at-large counselor, I will stand up with any of my district councilors, if it's a health center or anything else you need in your district, that you have my support in making sure that any department in the city or any other entity that is blocking the quality of life for any of your residents, that I'm there to support you. And before I sit down, I would just like to say happy birthday to my mom, who is celebrating her birthday, enjoying her lobster lunch. I do just want to thank her for all she does for me, her daughter, my children, and our entire family, so thank you. Happy birthday, Mom.
Thank you, and happy birthday to your mom. I too was there this morning at Carney Hospital, and I know that these issues are important. Counsel Fitzgerald and Counsel Braden have filed a hearing order for us to talk more about Stewart healthcare. Counsel Flynn, I believe you filed a hearing order about the issue that you talked about. I want to make sure we're also keeping announcements to announcements, the birthdays, the events, so that, that's what traditionally has happened. Counsel Flynn, when you were president, there was a moment where we actually didn't allow for announcements. I want to allow that back again, and I want to make sure that we are keeping it to announcements and then substantive issues we can talk about in our hearings. Counsel Durkin, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much. I am so excited. Next week is Valentine's Day, it's always been one of my favorite holidays, so at 11:00 AM in the Curly Room, I'll be hosting tea, pastries, cookies for everyone. I actually already have over 70 RSVPs, so hopefully my colleagues can join us as well. It's going to be a great event and really hoping, you know, some of the folks we've invited from our communities are able to meet some of the other counselors. So hope to see you there next week, Wednesday, 11:00 AM in the Curly Room. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's Valentine's Day, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Durkin. Do any of my, oh, Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, in tributes today, we will be remembering Larry Kessler and his contribution. Larry Kessler was a founding board member of the National AIDS Action and the executive director of AIDS Action, and HIV, HIV activism changed policy and saved many lives. I read in his obituary in the, in the Globe on the weekend that in the 1980s, if you were diagnosed with HIV/AIDS, no one wanted to come near you. Hospital staff didn't want to come near you, and Larry Kessler sent flowers to those patients as they struggled with the disease. And just to indicate that somebody recognized that their life mattered, that they mattered, and that they were loved, and, you know, everybody's scratching their head, they said, why's he wasting money on flowers? But he was the only person that was doing that in this organization. So, you know, we recognize the contribution of Ann McGuire a few weeks ago, she was a prominent leader in the LGBT community in Boston, tremendous public service and history of commitment and activism, and Larry Kessler is another one of those giants that we're saying goodbye to, and I just want to thank, remember his, his, his work and also pay tribute to, he really did change, change, save lives, and just to remember him and hope that we can continue his, his work going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. I too was really saddened by the passing of Larry, and that was a beautiful tribute to a really formidable person and human who showed up for those that society wanted to sideline, so thank you so much for that tribute.
With there are no other announcements, we are now moving on to memorials. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Coletta, Frank Scatino. Leona M. Lee Orlando. Frances Doran. John Sonny Mirabella. For Counselor Durkin, Jana Peretz. For Counselor Weber, Ron Hafer. For Counselor Worrell, Samuel Metro Mullin. For Councilors Braden and myself, Larry Kessler. A moment of silence, please. I want to say thank you to central staff for all of your work in making this meeting happen, I want to say thank you to the clerk's office. The chair moves that when the council adjourned today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. The council is scheduled to meet again in the Ayonella Chamber on Wednesday, February 14th, Valentine's Day at noon. Thank you. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
The council is adjourned. Thank you.[1762.36][1762.36]